You can do it.
You can do it, Scott.
My God.
Got it.
I'm faithful to you.
I move we approve the agenda.
Scott made the motion.
I second.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
You don't wrong.
That was kind of.
Next item is the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
You second it, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name?
Motion passes.
Is there anybody here that'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Next, old business, back to the street improvement plan. Only update I have on this is I have asked Lynn to go ahead and prepare an ordinance so that you guys could start reviewing it. We have until the end of July to pass it, but just so if the council chooses to move on that or make a motion, we can do so. But other than that, I don't, I don't have, Julie, do you have anything out of your committee on that? Is there anybody here from the public that likes to speak to that agenda item?
I talked to Baker, always taking that off the table.
I have spoken to Baker. I think it'll be a while before we hear a definitive answer from them. I had a meeting with the president and then I had a meeting with the president and a couple of our board members. Indications point to that they, they're not going to want it. So. That's, that's the indications I got from their board, from at least. So, but like I talked to him, you know, in the future, this is a multiple year process and that's probably not going to be our most needed street to improve, so there's plenty of time, it's all right.
Well, it's really not. The council has it in society.
That's.
So I mean, it's so, as long as they know that.
I indicate.
It's not their choice, we're just interested in their thoughts.
That's.
Because it might be a future council that makes the decision.
Right.
Yep, yeah, and that was all really, like, you know.
You're a quarter whether it's.
Well, I just, yeah, I feel like before we presented to them and then get them all excited and then they say yes, just to find, come back and say no, doesn't really make a lot of sense and, you know, don't want to tarnish your relationship, maybe we don't have to.
But if they were interested, you know, we could ask for what do you plan, you know, what would the plan be?
Right.
You know, what would it look like, you know, then we could, more information decide, it's just not going to be. Ground and path.
Right.
Does Baker have any room and place for expansion?
They own that lot across the catty corner from their campus now. The one that has all the nets on it?
One of the.
Throwers, track and field.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But, so, the indication I got, or the feeling I got from the conversation was, I don't think with this board they're going to probably want that, but I can't say that definitely. Any other discussion on that agenda item? Not when we won. Next higher generation. You gentlemen have anything else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not since last week.
Day by day it changes. So I guess it's the thing this last week.
Any council comments, anything further on this? All right, we move on. Next is a septic ordinance, this is second reading of that ordinance. Any comments on this?
No, just here to answer questions.
Council discussion? Not a whole entertainment motion.
Go ahead. I'm motion to approve the amendment to the septic ordinance as presented.
Moved, is there a second? Moved, seconded, Jared?
All right.
Susan?
Aye.
Cory?
Aye.
Scott?
Yes.
Julie? Motion passes. Next item is under new business, chip and seal bids, Rob.
So we have for your, your consideration this evening, our 2022 Phase Three Chip Seal Bids. We let these about six weeks ago. Up until the day of, we got zero bids back on this. Friday the sixth, which was the deadline, 11:00 AM, we had two bids walked in. They are in your council packet right now. Vance Brothers, who has worked for us the last two, and a new company called Harbor Construction out of Kansas City, Kansas, were the only two bids that we got. Staff reviewed the bids. Jason Hoskins from BG Consultants also reviewed the bids to make sure that they were actually bidding apples to apples, and they are. At this point in time, staff's recommendation is going to be to award the base bid and add alternate number one to Harbor Construction out of Kansas City, Kansas, the total amount There should be a map, which is up now, so everything that you see in yellow represents the base bid. Add alternate number one is in red, which is Seventh Street and Ninth Street.
And this is within the budgeted amount?
We had $200,000 budgeted for widening and resurfacing this year, and probably by the time we get done with the hot mix, patching and, and with this piece of it, it's, we'll be close, but we will come in under.
But we've worked with Vance Brothers previously?
We have. I have, I've had good luck with them and nothing bad to say about Vance Warranty work. They are back and, you know, it's just they, I, I don't know what happened on the bids, but they were at $175,008.07 for the base and add alternate, and so that's, that's quite a difference. Jason Hoskins is familiar with Harbor, and I, I, I don't know of any reason why we shouldn't try them and see how they do for us.
What's the unit price differential from our last, I mean, how, how much has been increased? I mean, they're seeing, was it $260 on per square yard-ish?
Last year, if you can remember what we did last year, that was about $115,000 last year, that Phase Two.
Yeah.
I don't remember the square yards on that, but I, I, I would say we're pretty similar in, in blocks, lane miles. This year, we're, that, that's a big chunk to bite off, this Phase Three, and there is a, like Newton Street between Eighth and Ninth is gravel. We're going to try that. We're going to try doing a primer and then chip seal over that. There's the west end of Oakwood Cemetery is in there, which is Millings. The main area is, is asphalt, but the, the west end is, is Millings that they've spread in there, so we'll have to do a little work to that, but those are kind of trial areas to see how it does over gravel. Other than that, it's, it's, we're just knocking out another piece of the core center of town.
Is that section of Newton, is that our only gravel street left?
First street by the police department's gravel.
Yeah. And over in between College and South Street is gravel.
Yes, so we're, we're, and then the, the very end of Elm Street, Leventon Elm is, is gravel from 12th Street.
The dead end there.
To the turnaround, to the tracks. If this works, you know, they, they talked about doing a benefit district there a couple of years ago and, and went right up to the point of getting the signatures and then it just kind of, it kind of dropped. So if this works or something, then maybe we could approach them with this. It doesn't help the, the width issue, but it might help the, the surface issue, at least from 12th Street on. And that's, that's actually Phase Four, it will be everything west of 11th Street.
Is Chapel still gravel too? The 11th?
No, that was, we, we, yeah, no.
They did, yes, they did.
But Baker, Baker is, there's only one house.
That's the one I'm thinking of, yeah.
Yeah, there's only one house up there.
Well, I used to do this chip and seal stuff, we all never think you guys talk about it, but they still do that, and do we have a place that they can do that?
Yeah, with this section, we likely try and use something, last year we used the, the old Maple Leaf Motel because it was close. This year, I'll, I'll try to find a spot, possibly the, the lot, the substation, Seventh and Newton, possibly, I don't know, we'll have to explore that a little bit, see if there's a better, a better alternative.
They can't use the motel thing anymore, or?
It would be farther to, to truck it. I'd like to try and find something in the general vicinity that they're going to be working in.
Hard surface?
It worked great last year, that, that lot worked perfect for us last year, and then whatever was left, we just, we just spread out a lot.
Do they, they, do they bring in oil in the store?
No, they bring that, they bring that. Bringing it hot every day, day of, yeah. They have a tanker there to, to reload their distributor. I assume that's what Vance Brothers did. I assume Harbor is similar. I, I, I don't know, if, if we get the, we get the approval on this, I will call Scott tomorrow and have him come down and do a walk around. I did that with Perry from Vance Brothers because I, I thought that's the only bid we were going to get, so I walked him through everything, so there was no surprises, so.
Some Vance Brothers did it last time?
They did it the last two. They were the only bids that we got last year, and last year we went in with the Douglas County, and so there was a lot of area, and that was the only bid we got last year.
I was just looking at the, our piece, and I noticed Vance Brothers gives a list of chip and seal projects that they've done.
I noticed that too.
And Harbor doesn't provide any or any references?
Absolutely. It's, it's, I, I really don't know anything else about them, other than what I can get by word of mouth, and that's from Jason Hoskins, our, our engineer, and he, he's aware of them, he knows of them, and so it's, it's not like our new company, they just haven't did any work in this area. I think maybe they're trying to expand out and get a little more into the rural areas.
And do we have to seal cracks and stuff for this, or do they do that?
We're working on that right now, in between everything else that's going on. This, this storm Sunday set us back a couple of days, but I'd like to get back on that tomorrow Thursday. We're going to have to hustle to get this done. I mean, there's a lot of prep work that's going to have to be done, because that's, we're getting into the streets that really, really need help now.
Are we responsible for sweeping?
No, they will, they will do, they'll come in and, and do a hard room first, and then they, they'll do a final sweep. We'll, we'll call them probably 30 days after, want to make sure that it's, the mat seat's good, so it'll probably be about 30 days, just, just like we did with Vance Brothers last year. So it'll be the same warranty, it's just what kind of customer service are we going to get? I, I know, I know Vance Brothers did a good job for us, but that's, I, I just, I don't know if we can justify the difference, $30,000. That would likely put me over to, would likely put me over budget.
Now, with that given, that's, they have to turn in interest?
They, they turn in a bond letter and, yes.
On their interest.
Any other questions for us?
Thanks.
Anybody else from the public that'd like to speak to this agenda item? Council discussion? Not all entertainment.
I move that we accept the staff recommendation of Harvard to do our chip and seal.
Moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved, second, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Next item.
Order of location.
See how it goes. Russ, ready for your annexation?
Good evening, everybody. Kind of in your package, you'll see this annexation. The parcel that, that is in reference, I've put a map, I need you guys' spots. It's located at the end of College Street, well, to the west end of that. We currently serve the customer that's out there with, one, their electricity, and, two, their water. We also have the sewer right to the edge of that property. The current customer that lives out there, they have a septic system. They're petitioning to, you know, be annexed into the city.
Any questions for Russ?
So that'd be close enough to the sewer system to connect to the sewer?
No. So we're, so we're the, the, the guy's looking at developing that property into, like, single-family houses, but currently he's greater than 200 feet, and plus the structure that's out there, he wants to, to get rid of and build something different, so. But it's very appealing with the sewer being that close to make everything come together for him. But there's no questions as far as, as far as the boundaries go for the utilities, so.
Do they require a list station for the store?
You know, that's a great question. That's just, it kind of depends on what exactly he decides to do out there.
Yeah, because I know, I know that whole development has one.
We can all.
Yeah, College, South Street, Mustang, Grabber, right there, all that and that.
They got a list station out there?
Any other questions for Russ on this agenda item?
And this is the first, this is, this is the first reading on this, so, I mean, if anything comes up. Thank you.
For us. Anybody else like to speak to this agenda item? Council discussion? How would you, once he develops it, what would be the path to get out there? Would you go down? Depends on how he develops it. You can either use College Street and extend that. Yeah. Or South Street and extend that into it.
170, 1600 room.
He has two rooms, a dead end there. Mm-hmm.
Time goes on, looks to me like we're looking at the map, if the city wanted to, they could extend a street right on there. College Street.
Yeah, College or South.
Yeah.
That's also a single family. Well, he'll have to go through the rezoning process once he gets annexed.
If the developer took it upon his, on his money to make that loop, he could use both of those routes.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Any motion on this?
No, well, it's for free.
All right.
If there's no more discussion, we'll move on. Next item, general obligation temp notes. Ben?
The resolution you've got before you actually authorizes the community center recreation acquisition and construction improvements. The total in the resolution is $2.13 million that, we're actually only issuing 1.5 in temporary notes. There'll be two-year temporary notes. We'll have an ability, obviously, to issue more if we need to, thus the authorization above the amount. The temporary notes are going to be a 24-month temporary note just to lock in a lower rate. Rates are headed up now, so I'll just lock them in now. And then those will be taken, taken out by long-term bonds. I went ahead and proformed with these again this afternoon, and it fits within our purview, what we've seen before. Industry side, I was, I was running with, it's around three and a half percent. We've ran conservative. A long-term bonds on this is around five, and of course, two years from now, so who knows what's, that's going to look like. But even at 5%, it, it, it fits within our pro forma. It puts a little pressure on the operating expenses, obviously, but everything's covered. Between now and then, obviously, sales tax will go up. We've got that built in at 1%. So I feel fairly comfortable that this is going to move forward financially. But that's what you've got before you tonight. The, it actually sets the sale for the temporary notes on June 7th, so we'll have a, an open sale there, and it'll be a bid form, internet bid form, so we'll take bids on, on that, on the temporary note, 1.5 million temporary notes. Be happy to answer any questions.
What are you saying, these temp notes come back at now on your other?
The latest we've got, Manhattan sold some A-rated notes around two and a half percent on, on temporary notes, two-year temporary notes. So they're ranging anywhere from two and a quarter to really 3%, which if you look back about four years, that's right where they would, would have been. That's a normal rate, which is unusual for the last two years since some rates were coming in at .1. But we're back to really normal rates at this point.
Any other questions for Ben? Any comments from the community? Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben.
Council discussion?
I'm curious on why this came up now. I mean, we haven't talked about the ballot all these months, so why are we not having a discussion?
Well, we approved it December, so they're getting closer to construction, so they wait to issue these temporary notes until closer to construction.
But if I remember right, that was not something that was permanent, decided. What I'm saying is, is that if I remember right, I asked about, if we, if we do this, that doesn't mean we're locked into it. Right?
I don't remember.
That.
I think we discussed, you know, when we approved, did we approve two or 2.13?
2.13.
So I think what we discussed is if what's happening now, rates, construction costs, drive it above that number, then there's no, they wouldn't have to re, have to readdress rate proof.
Yeah.
But if it comes in at or below that, that's what is decided in December. We approve this. And the, the checkpoint is now and say, okay, is it still feasible to do it 2.13?
There's really two things going on here that is advancing, at, at least financially in my mind, advancing this is, we've got five more rate increases between now and the end of the year, which already the, the minor rate increases that are happening with the Fed are, are driving municipal rates up, obviously. That will level out eventually, we just don't know what to level, what a level it will be. And then construction costs, obviously, are escalating. So those two, really getting ahead of those are going to save you money in doing it now versus waiting.
Let's play out Julie's scenario where we haven't got perfect bids for construction yet.
We don't even have a plan.
Well.
No concrete plan of how we're going to, um, staff it or anything. I think that all needs to be figured out before we commit to this.
Well, I know we've had discussion around the operating piece when we were talking to the REC Commission, and then when decided they didn't want to participate, what we showed out of the Budget Finance Committee was what we estimated the cost to be, and we could go back to one of those line, one of those graphs that we had that showed, here's our projections for revenue, for sales tax, for all the things that would drive revenue, and here's all our cost estimates, which included the 2.13 at a specific interest rate, and it had operation, operational costs in there. The number of headcounts, I think we talked about the amount of hours it would be open based on that, so, so we did have those conversations around this is what it would have to be, and it would fit into the budget at, with all these assumptions made.
So what part of the budget does, uh, pays these notes out?
We had to figure out if the donations were paid, with cash flow for the first few years, and then by then the library would be paid off, so then we have our quality-of-life sales tax that we're kicking in.
As an option, or it comes out of the general fund.
So the library doesn't have anything to say about that, keeping the quality of life?
No, because it has to be for a construction project, quality of life.
They have to be capital.
Yeah, capital project.
Well, my feeling is that I don't think there's any hurry to do the Bauer building. I think we should table this and have the public address this if we're going to go through it.
Can I ask why you think it should be delayed?
Well, I think one thing is that we need to see how this fits into our strategic plan. Maybe this isn't the most important thing that needs to be done.
I mean, I'd have to disagree with you. I think we heard about it throughout the strategic plan. I think it did lend itself to the top of that strategic plan.
It wasn't. It wasn't in the top three, I don't believe.
It's because it was already done. We already went on.
In the initial strategic planning discussion, we had, I believe it was the top priority, but then after we met again, it was already in the works. So then we kind of removed it from, you know, one of our choices because it was basically done. I mean, it was just the final step. And as far as urgency goes, I think Ben expressed every reason in the world why there is a sense of urgency. Construction cost and rising interest rates. We want to save our citizens' money and give them a community center. I think now's the time.
What's the consensus to the public? What's the public saying about it?
When we did all our surveys during our public outreach time, over 80% said that they.
And how did you survey?
Online. And then we had town hall meetings and met with multiple groups. It was about two years, one of the work.
It was overwhelmingly the community wants a community center, they did not want a property sales tax increase.
I remember something like that. No, when we had those meetings, wherever it was, we had a third to schoolhouse. When the public came in and we all sat down, we got things like this. I don't remember really that this was all a matter of important event.
I remember it being mentioned.
There were some things in there that seemed to be above this. The one thing that sticks out in my mind that I remember, I think maybe it was just in a group where I was out there, where everybody could see some kind of magical place, like they have a door or someplace, something like that. But I don't remember the group that I was with talking about that. I'm sorry.
No, yeah, that's fine. I mean, that's just different between private sector and public sector. I mean, we got to woo somebody like that into town. I think we continue to try to do that, but as far as the public.
I stopped up here and watched the people, the old people run and play cards. The REC Center, whatever it is. One day when there was quite a few cards there, I thought, let me see what's going on. Of course, there was some bridge playing and a sense of that going on. And I mentioned that, I said, if we got a new recreation building, new power building or whatever it is, would everybody leave, go and turn to do it? And the way where he said, oh, I think it was all about it. He seemed pretty comfortable. What was that, I guess? Or I was probably also a stranger. I didn't get much of a comment on it. And I don't hear people talking about it or saying anything about it. So I don't, I don't know.
Usually means it has support.
Does he have what?
When you don't hear anything, that's usually a good thing.
Not necessarily.
Somebody that was definitely not happy about the speed, which we've come to an early decision, were very vocal about it, the process and making sure we had feedback and enough time. And the REC Commission had enough time to go out and look at, you know, what their plan was. I'm comfortable that we did take the time. We did, this has been on the agenda multiple times, been multiple work sessions. I think the public's had a chance to provide feedback to all of us. It may only be provided to some of us, but I'm comfortable with the process of how we got to where we're at today and that it's priority of the council, along the last motion we approved. And then I think the timing of it, you know, to Ben's point, you know, if we planned to do it, we should start moving forward sooner as opposed to later, so.
I understand all the study that's been put into it. I understand the work that you deal out too as well. Two weeks is 2.13 or whatever it is. I understand it, and I know that that was without overnight, and I appreciate that. I'm not too sure if this building is not an all-to-Trust.
What do you mean by that?
Old.
It is old.
Fast as dinosaurs.
It's also on the National Historic side, right?
That's the whole idea. That's why we're getting so many tax credits, because it's old.
National Historic Society donating any funds for this?
No, the building was donated.
You get the credits.
And the building was free.
And would raise over 300,000.
But I'm sure that the work you've done is accurate. And I'm sure that, and the conversation that you had at the beginning of this before I interrupted you, that the price that you reached or that has been discussed is probably the best price you're going to get. Because I agree with what he says.
The issue is we don't have a price yet. We authorized a level, a maximum level.
That was.
And if we wait, well, we could go out and get bids tomorrow, and they could come back higher than that. Then we'll have another decision. If it comes back there or less, then we've already approved that that's fine, acceptable.
And that's your 2.13?
So what's the timing of bids and where we at?
And what was, so I asked, what's the total cost? What's the total cost to do what you want to do?
That's the 2.2.
That's the 2.13?
Yeah.
So it's 2 million, 2 million, 130, what?
135,000, yeah. That's all in right now.
$2 million to do that? How much has cost another new one?
Well, the police station was half the square footage of that, and that was 1.7.
You're probably looking at 4.6.
Yeah, that was before jailhouse.
Brand new, it's going to be between 4 and 6, depends on what you want to do with it. If it's identical, it's going to be at least that. Then you still have the issue of what do you do with the Bauer building to maintain it.
Land acquisition.
Right.
So even if I went ahead and passed something, Scott, you're telling me that the bids haven't, that nobody's letting bids on this thing? So we don't really know where we're standing. Why are we talking about it?
Well, if I can speak to the timing, it's not unusual. It's not unusual to have this type of discussion on temporary notes at design and have an estimate. That's not unusual to have this discussion, what you're having right now. What the timing is, having that discussion along with issuing temporary notes is not unusual. That's very common. Because you want, you want to get that money locked in, you know you're going to move forward, you want to get the money locked in. And since it's temporary notes, you have an ability to go up or down, depending on what that, what those bids come back at. But having, not to mention Kansas cash basis law requires you to have a funding source in place and actually in order to issue that RFP for those bids or for that construction. What we have is an estimate of 2.13 or 2.2 for construction of a building, which now if you go out for an RFP, you expect that to come back with a GMP, your gross maximum price. If it doesn't, like Scott said, you've got another decision to make. Do you engineer it down or go up?
What you're telling me or what you're implying to me is that we need to make some kind of decision to get on and get a bid made to see if it's going to be at 2.13 before we can proceed with anything else. Is that what I'm hearing?
No. You can proceed with this temporary note and do that RFP at the same time, at the same time.
That's been being worked on since December. So we're waiting for engineering and all that before the RFP is let.
So correctly if I'm wrong, we can wait to do temporary note. I mean, the guidance is let's do it now. Worst-case scenario is you do a temporary note and the prices come in way above expectation. You decide we're not going to do it for, we're going to wait. We then have to go back in and pay off the temporary notes.
With the cash that's already settled.
The cash, you know. Basically, your loan proceeds, you basically pay back plus whatever interest you had for the bounty. So we would be out however many months of interest on those temporary notes if at some point we decide not to do this. We don't want to sit on two years worth of temporary notes.
So how do we resolve that?
Resolve what?
To keep away from that.
We're going to get bids and see if it's less than 2.1. If it is, we're moving forward.
I thought I just asked that.
That's, yeah, and he said that along with the temporary notes.
You could do it at the same time. You could do it at the same time.
At the same?
You can do it at the same time.
So the design and bid before you start construction, you're still many months away. Right? So we're trying to get the rates locked in for temporary notes while we go to design, get the bids, and then start construction, which actually you need to start paying. There's a gap in time. We can wait for temporary notes, but the interest rates are going to be higher.
I understand all that, Scott. I don't know, I just don't understand what the hell we're doing.
Okay.
Why don't we do something instead of talk?
Well, make a motion. We're discussing Julie's concern.
I got it. And I appreciate that. We all have to.
Any further discussion?
No, because it's a moot point because I'm a Diablo leader, so.
Discussion's not a moot point.
Not I, I can't a motion.
I move to approve the resolution to authorize the sale of general obligation temporary note series 2022-A.
Second.
Move to second, all the papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion passes 32. Next, council committee report, Budget Finance, Scott.
Well, first of all, it sounds like we probably need to bring back some of the financial analysis we did on this. Refresh everybody's memory and bring you up this question of if it comes back in under the 2.1, you know, what it looks like from a budget perspective and how this thing's funded. I think they would answer some questions from you and might answer some from you. So I think that would be worth it. And then also kind of figure out how tight it might be based on where the interest rates are and where construction costs may go. So we'll make a note to do that, bring that back.
As it was discussed, interest rates are not aligned out very seriously if it comes in at 2.13 or even at that error.
That will be the next decision point.
Probably right to late.
So committee report, I think, I mean, we just meant to discuss the content and agenda for the budget work session. It's what we spent the committee time doing. You know, I think, and I'm open to hear some feedback on what was presented. You know, I think I would like to see us do a better job in committee and maybe take two sessions and review the data first. And I think what we gave you as asked out of the work session is probably what we should show the first time as far as the high-level view with the changes and that sort of thing. So a lot of data, it was all there, but it was very hard for me, even knowing what it was, to kind of digest what the delta was, what the changes were. So I think we'll try to look at, you know, when we come back with what was asked out of the work session, we'll try to incorporate that into the next kind of handling discussions. Having a more high-level ability to drill down where needed as opposed to just showing the data and trying to generate questions. Feedback, yea, nay? You guys all headed wired the whole time? I was the only one that was somewhat lost? Okay, so we'll continue to try to make that more digestible. That's what we discussed. Since we have five weeks in a month, I'm proposing the next, since Ben's not here Friday, I'm proposing the next Budget and Finance Committee meeting on the 31st.
27.
27. 27. So we'll do that on 27th. Let's do 8 o'clock. That'll give Casey time to get through the jittery drafty lines.
Actually, 7:45 works great for me because I mean, eat at school rough.
Okay, we had 7:45. Didn't want to wait for anymore.
Whatever, you didn't have to wait for the last time.
So we'll do 7:45, Friday, the 27th, second floor of this.
So we won't meet on the 20th?
Correct.
Is there any, can I interrupt for a second? Is there any way that we could do a, do the budget as a council as a whole rather than having it as a committee? I mean, you could still be the finance committee, but as far as the budget?
I mean, really, that's what those work sessions are for. You know, we just have to do those twice a full council meetings.
This might be.
Yeah.
This seems like the finance committee knows so much more than we do. And then when it's brought to us, we don't have enough time to grasp what's happening.
Yeah, I see your point, and I know it's a lot. I think that's true of all the committees. I mean, all the committees have a little bit more information on how they got to where they did with all their respective decisions.
Right, but it's easier to understand CDC or public work through his budget. It's a good suggestion.
I think I talked to, we talked to the league about this one time. It was strongly recommended to do the committee-centric because I kind of suggested something similar.
Yeah, I mean, part of the reason is because now you do everything serially. Nothing's done in parallel, right? See, so, you know, we have council meetings for every, directly for every committee altogether. And so things can't happen in parallel, so the amount of work we can go do is just getting reduced as a body as a whole. And that's, you know, neither here nor there. I guess what I would suggest maybe as a step is if you're not comfortable with anything, you don't understand anything, just say, I'm not, I'm not ready to vote, I don't get it, I need to understand it. And I think your council members will want to help you get there. So I would suggest you say, I don't understand how we got here. And then we do a work session, if that's what it takes. Because a lot of the committee meetings, there's not a lot of prepping, you know, prep work. There's not a lot of, you know, real definitive budget and finance work. You know, housekeeping, prepping for the work session. I mean, it's a thought, I just think it's going to slow us down. But if you aren't getting what you need, then we got to consider that as well.
You can't tell our council members on committee meetings. I've been told yes and no.
It's like gray.
Yeah.
It's like you can, but it's like you get looked at.
And it was, we went through that with the last council. And we reached out to the league on that. It was highly recommended that council members do not, because what we're finding was they were inserting themselves into committee meetings. And that's not the intended purpose for the committee meetings, but we did reach out to the league on that. They recommended to us.
I know that you sign on the house.
But the recommendation would be, the recommendation from the league at that time was if the council members do, then they just stay silent. That was Glenn, am I incorrect on all that?
No, that is correct, and we have experienced that here. It's, again, it's not anything illegal and unethical, but it is not a great practice.
What you're saying is a good place you would want me to go.
So what's the guidance around, say Julie has questions, reaching out to Corey or myself, or you have questions, and we talk one-on-one specifically about questions that they have about what's happening in the committee? We talk one-on-one specifically about questions that they have about what's happening in the committee?
Typically, we want to point them to Glenn.
Yeah, I'd rather he go through the staff first, because you do see, again, because you get, most likely they don't have three people involved, and that would be an open and exact violation.
So where's the third person?
Well, I said, you got, you're going to a committee, so...
No, just if she has a question of another council member.
That's true, you could do that.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would address it to the committee.
No, no, no. My point was, if, you know, she can ask any one of us questions, as long as it's one-on-one.
Yeah.
And then it's not serial, where then you take what you said and take it to another. So I think that's something I always thought was, you know, if you got questions, you know, I would ask the committee members specifically, hey, I don't understand this, what happened? Can you fill me in? And then I'm, and then I'm further along than I was. So I would offer that up. Anytime anybody has a question, I'm happy to answer what I can, you know. Point you at Ben if needed, Glenn, you know, there's a whole bunch of resources. We're willing to take the initiative that we can get you up to speed.
Are you through with that?
No.
You got something else you want to say?
Depends on what you're saying.
You got a committee report coming up.
I'm old, but it's not that bad. I wasn't here last year, and I didn't attend a lot of meetings last year, to get a lot of information on this project that we discussed quite thoroughly along the way. And everything that I got during the period of time that that was coming down was negative from outside, not from here. So I take the stance that I took because I had probably been prejudiced somewhat by the outside community prior to the time that I got into this position. And so that's probably one of the ideas or one of the feelings that I have, is I'm still not really certain from what I've heard this person from, some good people, not just the coffee bunch, but from some good people, about that project and how much money had already been spent and how much was going to be spent for something that was as old as it was. So that's more or less why I took the position that I took, and aimed not to depend anybody for what I did.
I offered, reached out to Lynn, she has all the data that was taken over that two years. You can come through that.
I'm getting it, when it comes out, when it comes out of the group here at the council, I can just, then, I'm kind of getting an idea. But that's, that's where I was at. So, you know, if I finish, you apologize.
Not personally.
On your time.
Community development, Corey?
We've not met. I will be, reach out to the committee to move up the meeting from the twenty, from the thirtieth to the twenty-third. We have that June fundraiser event, June eighteenth, and we could use that for a meeting, so.
What safety season?
No updates, only did not meet, we're still waiting on something. Next meeting is June fourth, no, that's a Saturday. What did I tell you, Jared? June fourteenth at four o'clock.
So it's not until after the next council meeting?
Right. I can move it up for you too.
I was just, I know you're working on ordinance, so I was gonna have for three, but also we have a couple councils, there's no rush to it, so.
Right, yeah.
I didn't want to get that. I think we've been talking about that for quite a while.
Yeah, I know.
Public portion utilities, too.
Yeah, I put some things in the packet that, I don't know if everybody looked at it or not, but there was one picture of the new motor control pumping station. And then there was the one that was the old one. And I just thought it was very interesting that for you to see the old one compared to the new because it was quite a difference. And also, you probably have seen around town that they're starting on the water tower, tower washing, prepping, and they're gonna do the paint logos like they did the other water tower. The surveyors for the North Four Hundred Road waterline extension are in town and will probably be getting bids still possibly this month. And the San Fe Crosswalk, our BG consultants, they're waiting on a KDOT to chloroformit information and site engineering to begin the bid process on that. And the new KDHE, EPA led service line inventory rule that's coming down is very involved. I think I put that in the back also. And we just started talking about that in our last meeting, so we're gonna be continuing to talk about that, I'm sure. It's not like we're, we're not gonna be able to say yea or nay. I think it's, we have to do it. So our next meeting is going to be June sixteenth instead of the ninth, because I'm gonna be out of town for two weeks.
Hold on. All right. Good?
Yep, I'm good.
Chief plane, Scott?
Last week, and truly what we accomplished was, I think, come to a consensus on what the output of that committee is going to be. What we plan to do, and obviously looking for some feedback here from the rest of the council, is take what Patty provided, I think everybody got a copy of that, from our strategic plan in our last strategic call session. Take that plus the notes we have from that session and put together a format of a strategic plan and populate it with, kind of simplifying all that into a first pass of here's what we think we've heard from the council, and then bring it back to the council for editing, changing, and, you know, with the goal to adopt and publish a strategic plan by the end of the year. So we want to give you a starting point as a body saying, okay, here's what you think it looks like, what do we need to change? And we can all start editing. And hopefully it's fifty, sixty percent there, and we change forty percent, we get to the end by the end of the year. Julie's gonna reach out to, to figure out what the forms were, the form of communication. She's gonna reach out and thank the committee members that participated in those feedback sessions, just to kind of let them know, hey, their information is being rationalized in the strategic plan. Thank them for their work and, you know, stand by, we may need some more, some more feedback. So if you decided what the forms you're gonna do that communication in?
I think I was gonna give that to Lynn, and she was gonna put it on the website.
Okay.
And send it out individually to the people that we have online.
So that's the plan. Next meeting, the twenty-seventh, two P M, location?
And it's going to be at the library, right here.
At the library.
Where was it?
You can't come, so I'm telling you.
You want to convince about that too?
City minister comments, staff?
I think Scott mentioned about an analysis on the power building. We'll have that by the next budget finance meeting. So we'll see how the rates are changing around some scenarios, and so you see what the impact is on that. You've seen that spreadsheet before that Ben did. So it's just a matter of updating that. We'll be ready to go with that. We also have our new bond rating, and we'll, by the next council meeting, we'll have either a resolution or an ordinance, I'm not sure which, for the question of the brick streets and the sales tax and all that. So we'll have that ready to go.
Only question I have is you mentioned two work sessions for finance, for the budget?
I do.
You did what?
Two work sessions for the budget. My intent was to have the next June work sessions towards the end of June, the fourth Tuesday in June, because then our assess evaluation numbers will be out. So we wanted, we're gonna have back-to-back work sessions, so is that, do that, present high level with the, with the actual numbers from the assess valuation, turn around in July, have one more before we start.
Yeah, I think one is, again, boom, here's all the data, and it's like, and here's the decisions we need to make, right? It'll be middle levy, decisions, you know, that we need to decide on. So I think walking through the information on one session, talking about the decisions that we need to make, and people come back prepared to have final discussion. I'd hate to do that on all-in-one session.
So are we having one on the fourteenth or not?
No, we'll have it on the twenty-eighth.
Twenty eighth, okay.
And then we'll turn around again and have one July twelfth. And then that. Amber, can you get that changed on the website? June twenty-eighth for the next work session?
And that will be a budget on?
Yes, both of those will be budgets.
All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion, good turn.
Your turn.
Second. Moving to second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, name? Motion passes, good turn.